...that want to make career changes in the, from where, what they're doing now. And by the way, we've had some of them with professional degrees coming to us now wanting to make some career changes. Then I think it's a wonderful thing for the citizens of our county and our communities to have opportunity. And that's what we promised you, that's what we're delivering to you. I wanted to just come and share that with you. So, thank you for your support. I'd be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from anybody? If there is, push your button.
Just so I can be the first one, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Dr. Keen, these are, this is a great program. You know, when you first came to us, it seemed like a winner and, you know, there's always the risk when we try on new things, but it looks like the risk and the reward have really been hand in hand on this. I really applaud you guys for doing this. I mean, coming to us with this vision and then going through with it. This is, this is something that could really make us stand out on the map, and I just want to tell you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. One of the things that has been, we've benefited from is that we're beginning to have other companies, as I mentioned, the car companies that we mentioned, I mentioned to you Honda America, that are looking at our community now that we did not have before. We were not on the map. I mean, we were locally and we were with our very effective, you know, new car dealers, but when you start having companies come to us like these that are looking to do things not only here but other places, and we're a venue to help them do that and be successful, it says a lot for Cumberland County and your leadership as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keen.
And I would like to just say, Dr. Keen, this is a perfect example, too, of supporting businesses that are already in the community, saving them money so they don't have to send their potential employees out of county, out of state possibly, to be trained. It's also contributing to the military, even though, and we support our military in many ways, but this is another way of supporting the military, as well as, you know, it sounds like that you might be working with some wounded warriors.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that that's what you call those that are there, but it sounds like it. And you're creating economic opportunities because those people that are coming from out of town, according to your report, are staying in our hotels, motels, or renting property and eating in our community and spending a little of their own money. And so, we, we do appreciate that. So, we're glad we could support you and, and take this back to the people that work in the program. Thank you for doing a good job. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
The next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? Mr. Keith?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull item 3K-2.
Any others?
Is my light working?
Yes, your light's working. I got you.
Okay.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to pull a K-2, sir. Is that when you just pulled?
That's when you just-
You said 3K. Okay, thank you, Jim. I'm sorry.
You got it.
Okay. Any others?
I just wanted to see if my light would work.
It's working. All right. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 3K-2?
So moved.
Second.
Lights, please. You've got to train these guys.
Do you want us to vote on the lights?
We want you to know, we don't want you to vote on the lights. We just want you to be recognized on the lights.
Okay. Oh, wouldn't we do a second?
Yes.
Oh. Roger that.
And so, I won't have to twist my head, Officer.
Okay.
Okay?
So moved.
All right. I got that from Mr. Evans and seconded by Mr. Keith.
We're going to have fun.
Mr. Lancaster, did you want to speak?
Excuse me, please.
Okay. You can take it. All right. We're still training here. All right, is there, we, has been a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 3K-2. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Keith, item 3K-2.
Thank, thank you. First of all, as a point of order, this went to committee and it was not unanimous. Should it have still been on consent? Is that our policy?
I think in the past, we have still put items that are not unanimous on the commit, on the consent agenda.
Okay. I was, I was under the impression that only unanimous, but that's, that's fine. Mr. Moorefield, are you going to speak on this or is Mr. Hasty?
Mr. Hasty.
Okay.
But it was unanimous.
For, for those in the audience who don't know, this is the revisions to section 9.5101 of the Cumberland County Code regarding weapons posting. And I, I think my, my first question, Mr. Hasty, is why are we even bringing this up? I mean, it has not been a problem. Open carry has been in our county for years. Our state is an open carry state. Who, why was this brought to us?
Well, it was brought to our office's attention because there was an individual that walked into, I believe it was the historic courthouse with an open carry, and I believe that made the staff nervous, and they, they brought it to our attention to, to bring it to your attention, basically.
Okay. So, because they made someone nervous, it was brought to, it was brought in to bring an ordinance because someone didn't, it felt like an open carry made them feel threatened? Is that-
I don't know that detail how they felt. I just know that we were asked to research it, whether or not they were allowed to or not, and our research revealed that we don't have any prohibition against that. And so, if, if you desire it to be your policy, you would have to pass, change this ordinance.
I, I don't understand. Personally, for me, I think we've got a knee-jerk reaction to it, as I said earlier. But, again, this policy has been in, in our state for years and years and years and years. There's never been a problem, but because somebody felt like there may have been a problem with it, they, that, that they felt like it had to become to our committee as an ordinance. Is, is that a fair assessment?
I believe that's a fair assessment.
Okay. And if, if I am correct on this, that we, they could still have a weapon on the grounds, but they'd have to leave it in their car?
That's correct by statute.
Okay. Can someone with an open carry come in this courthouse?
No, there's a separate statute. Because we house the state court system, they cannot open carry in the courthouse. There's also a statute, you cannot open carry on school grounds or educational establishment or where alcohol is sold.
And those are state statutes?
Correct.
And state statute is that we can have an open carry law, but they allow counties to modify that?
That's right. Unless the county decides, then it, it stands as open carry.
If someone is an off-duty law enforcement agent, would they have to leave their, and they are carrying, would they have to leave their weapon also in the car?
No, sir. There's, there are exceptions in the ordinance for law enforcement, off-duty law enforcement who are in the-
The ordinance I saw did not say off-duty, but it said law enforcement.
But if they're, it's in accordance with their duties, military, in accordance with their duties.
Okay. Or a private, somebody, a private, a private person who is off-duty, who is private security, they would not be able to carry either, even though they were authorized and trained to do so?
Correct.
Okay.
Sometimes, sometimes, I'm not saying everyone, but sometimes we run into some hot-headed individuals. And the first thing that they're going to think is that I have my weapon right here, regardless if the person sees it or not. And my thing is, we hear, I know I woke up this morning listening to the news about parties here in Cumberland County where shots have been fired and whatnot. And I think it's our responsibility as lawmakers to make sure that all citizens are safe. Now, if you may, you may think you're safe by carrying a gun, that's fine, but I know all my life, I have never owned a weapon, and I felt safe. And the places that I did not feel safer, I didn't go or I left. There's times that I sat here in this courtroom, in, in this building here, right here, and didn't feel safe, but I felt safe because he was there.
Man with a gun.
And if it had been me, I might have been quick to pull my weapon if I could carry it. And this may not make sense to you. It may not make sense to anybody, but I do know the seven of us here are to make sure that our citizens are protected. And one of those protections is to make sure that we do what's right and keep these weapons off the property here. We're looking at people that go, go to recreation centers, to games. We've heard about parents, they're not happy with the call of a game. They say, you know, they're out there on the mound fighting. So, if they have a weapon there, what do you think is going to happen? Some kid is going to accidentally get shot. So, I agree with the amendment to this ordinance, and I hope my fellow colleagues would think about this. We're looking at our schools, we're looking at, I think we're looking at our schools, aren't we?
Sorry to take care of the schools.
Okay. And we're looking at other places where we have children and adults alike that we need to be concerned about, and that's our job. Thank you.
Mr. Keith?
Well, I'll take second, second piece on it. Mr. Evans can come back after me on this one, but I think feeling safe is subjective, subjective to a number of people. And when I'm out somewhere and I don't feel safe and I have my children with me, you know, I want to protect them in any way I can. Just, we cannot make rules and laws and everything for this one instance where somebody is going to come around. The safety of our citizens is a double-edged sword, Mr. Evans, in, in my opinion. And that means that they have the right to protect themselves, and they also have, they also have the right to protect their families in there. It was not very long ago that we were in a public building that an attempted murder took place where people bring children every single day. And that was with somebody who didn't have a concealed carry, didn't have a open carry, but someone who had a knife looking to do harm. And if you had your children in there, I'm sure that you would feel like you had to protect them too, and they should have that right. But my main purpose on this is, why are we doing this? It has been here for 20, 30, it's, it's been here as long as we've had an ordinance for open carry. There has never been a problem, but we are making an action because somebody, we think, felt uncomfortable. If we made every ordinance because somebody, we think, feels uncomfortable, our ordinance would be six feet high. It might already be six feet high, I don't know. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Evans, again?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Keith, and, and I know we can go begging for this all day, but now it's my turn. And I, I agree. I agree with you. I agree, I agree with you. Maybe it is knee-jerk, and maybe we are changing the ordinance because somebody felt a certain way. But my thing, but my thing about this particular ordinance is that the first part of this ordinance was changed or was addressed apparently because somebody felt a certain way. And so, I just think we should continue to be uniform, if, if that's the correct word to use. We're already banning concealed weapons. Let's go ahead and the open display of weapons, let's do the same with that. Let's just unify. I'm done.
Mr. Adams, did you not want to speak?
No.
All right. Anybody else? Ms. Counsel?
Motion.
No, that was me. I was a motion.
Okay.
I hit my button to make a motion. I'm, I'm not, I'm going-
Hit this one, Ms. Counsel. Okay, Mr. Counsel.
Wait a minute. My motion may not be the one you are like.
I had my button first.
You want to make a mo, whoever hit the button first, your own side.
He hit the button first. I'm trying to get the buttons right.
I, I'm going out on a plank here. I don't even know if I'm going to get a second. I'd like to make a motion that we table this item for 60 days for more information. That's my motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. Ms. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, this issue has been of concern throughout the state. Serving as co-chair of the Legislative Goals Committee, it came up. I cannot remember how many people or how many counties talked about this. It was a concern at our state legislative goals committee, and I think this follows through with making that, this ordinance clear in our county. It is an emotional issue. It is a totally emotional issue. But the idea of safety is one that concerned us at the state level also. So, I move a motion, I make a motion to approve this ordinance as written.
Okay, Mr. Evans?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I would like to say that I'm going to support the motion also, but I'm going to support the motion because the state has given us the authority to change the ordinance if we see fit, and this is concerning county-owned buildings. It is not concerning what happens at the mall, what happens on the streets. It concerns what happens when you enter a county-owned building. And there basically is only six words that are changing in this ordinance, and that is to include open carry handguns in these buildings. And we, as responsible people, have the, the duty, if you will, is to protect the people that come into our buildings, whether your handgun or your, is concealed or if it's open. And, and that's the way I feel about it, is that I feel like that the state has given me, as a county commissioner, the authority to, to change this ordinance that best fits this county. And so, I'm going to support the motion. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
I'm supposed to push a button?
We don't vote by the button.
Oh, goodness.
You missed orientation.
I missed orientation.
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Lancaster, Chairman Edge, Commissioners Council, and Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Keith.
Okay. Moving on.
Item number four is our public hearings. We have an uncontested rezoning case, case P-15-27.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt, just for clarification, the ordinance did not pass tonight. It will be brought back in August to have, because it was not unanimous vote, it will require a second reading, so I just want to make sure that me understands that it's not a factor.
It will require a second reading, so we'll vote on it again in, in August at our first meeting.
Yes, sir. Case P-15-27, just a rezoning from R-40 Residential Agricultural, which is consistent with all applicable plans. There was no opposition, and the planning board recommended unanimously to approve the request.
Any speakers?
There are no speakers.
I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the board? Ms. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 Vision, Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Second motion.
I move to approve the rezoning for A-1 Agricultural District as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the, the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
I'll second that motion also. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, my button's supposed to be on.
The next case is case P-15-28.
Yes, sir. This is a request of rezoning of CP. It's actually the same property which, the same owners that own the frontage of the property. It's merely an extension for Scan Electric to store vehicles using their business. No one appeared in opposition. It's consistent with applicable plans, so the planning board recommended unanimously to approve.
Okay, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Open and close the public hearing. Does someone like to make these motions?
I'll make a motion, sir.
Okay. Mr. Evans?
Move to find that, find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, sir. Move to approve the rezoning of CP Planned Commercial as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
All right, the motion's second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. Item C is a presentation on the South Central Land Use Plan.
Yes, sir. We have the planning staff here, Will Denning, head of the Comprehensive Planning Section, is going to present the, the presentation. Denise Sykes, senior planner, worked on the plan, and Will Lindvall also. And in your packet is provided the, the recommendation by both the Comprehensive Planning Subcommittee of the planning board as well as the planning board. So, Will Denning will be presenting that.
Mr. Denning, welcome. Haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a while. I'd like to say, good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to get started. The South Central Cumberland County Land Use Plan is part of 11 areas that the county planning staff's been working on over the years. The area we're working on now is South Central Cumberland County, which, which is, I'm going to just define the area. It's defined on the east by the Cape Fear River. North is pointing to my left, your right. On the north side, the boundary is the city of Fayetteville. The west side is basically Gillespie Street, I-95, and the southern portion is Robinson and Hope County. The Fayetteville Regional Airport is part, is inside the plan but not part of the plan. Just to give you a little bit of information about the area, it's 44,000 acres, it's about 16,000 people. It had population change between 1990 and 2010 of about 100 percent. This is a slide that shows development that has occurred in the area. You look at the red dots, those are rezoning cases. The green dots are either site plan or subdivision approval, and the blue diamonds or board of adjustment cases. The process we went through is basically what we do as a staff, is we put together some information, we schedule what we call a vision session with the area residents, where we use that to gather data, and we also use that to establish what we call the Citizens' Planning Committee. That Citizens' Planning Committee is a group of individuals that are charged with staff facilitation to develop the plan. Once that plan is developed by that planning committee, a second community meeting is held, and that, they get feedback from the community, and then they take that information back to the committee and consider the input they got from the citizenry, and then they draft up the final plan, which is presented to the planning board at a public hearing, which makes a recommendation to you guys. The vision session, it had, there was over 200 people. And basically, at the vision session, we asked three questions. What do you like to see in the future for the area? And basically, what's good, what's bad? These are some of the elements that they said they want to see in the future, controlled growth, improvements around Crown Coliseum, maintain the country, the country atmosphere, incorporate Grace Creek, affordable water and sewer. Some of the assets, which is the good things, peace and quiet, the agriculture in the area, the Cape Fear River school system. And some of the liabilities, litter along the roads, lack of control for urban industrial and industrial sprawl, poor private trash service, and lack of police protection. The Citizens' Planning Committee was an all-volunteer committee. We had 53 people to volunteer. We had 15 meetings that, they spent over 30 hours working on the plan, and most of the time, there were between 11 and 27 people at the meetings. Their recommendations, the first thing they did is develop goals and objectives for certain land use categories that I'm not going to go into, they're in your packet. They also looked at entrance corridor enhancements, some things that they felt like needed to be done to entrance corridors, and they defined those. They also looked at and recommended the protection of natural buffers along the waterways in the area. They recommended co-locating community facilities and services in one particular location, centralized in the area. No billboards on designated streets. Other recommendations included concentrating commercial development in those at major intersections and interchanges, encouraged the reuse of vacant industrial and commercial buildings, protect residential areas from industrial and commercial development, protect farmland, the agricultural interests, and the rural character in the southern portion of the study area. They also recommended protecting Fayetteville Regional Airport from incompatible land uses, protecting the natural areas, environmentally sensitive areas, and historic and scenic sites in the area. They also developed a water and sewer policy, and basically, and I'm going to read these, density greater than two units in acre must have public water and sewer. Areas with existing water and sewer should be encouraged to be developed first. Explore the establishment of a water district with what the water source from Bladen County to provide safe drinking water with the district being owned, operated, and controlled by the residents. In the future, water and sewer extensions should be done incrementally, incrementally and systematically. Rural water should be extended only to provide potable water, eliminate water contamination issues, and be explicit for rural development only. And sewer only be permitted in the designated farmland area where there is a health risk. They also recommended promoting infield development, the tract of land that you see in blue. They're over one acre, and they have access to water and, public water and sewer within 300 feet. They also recommended protecting the rural character in the area. The next three slides is kind of a, an illustration of how that's to be developed, and I'm just going, it's in your packet. They also recommend supporting the FAMPO's Bicycle and Pedestrian Connectivity Plan that's been approved by the TAC. They also recommend that the Cape Fear Trail be extended to Ornette Park along the Cape Fear River, and a pedestrian connector be extended back up to the Crown Coliseum and back to downtown. They made some recommendations for the industrial park, and some recommendation around the Crown Coliseum and Fayetteville Regional Airport. And I'm going to kind of go through this slide. Basically, the areas that you see in green, these are roads that need either some transportation improvements or some kind of enhancement, either beautification or other. They also recommend that, this is Doc Bennett Road, they recommend that a connector road be connecting Doc Bennett Road to Owen Drive, initial location at the, almost where East Mountain Drive is, and that Owen Drive be upfitted as a super street to tie the Crown Coliseum to the mall in Fort Bragg and also the airport. And also, that there be a connector that ties it into the downtown on Gillespie Street.
Wow. Wow.
This is an illustration of how we envision those roads to be, just picking up the theme from the downtown with the brick pavers, concrete curving gutters, the sidewalks, street trees, landscape median, the sign program that's been adopted by all the municipalities in the county. This is just an illustration of how we envision that street to look.